Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm going to call the Hingham School Committee meeting of January 5th, 2022 to order at 6 o'clock. We are all here, but Carlos De Silva, one of our members, is participating remotely tonight through Zoom. So the first thing we have is to deliberate on finalist candidates for the superintendent of schools. I feel like this has been going on for quite a while. Last night, we had the opportunity to meet our two finalist candidates through superintendent, and we all really enjoyed our conversations with both of them. We're super fortunate to have two strong candidates, and I think either one would make an excellent superintendent. So now our task is to determine who is the right person for Hingham right in this moment, given our strengths, our challenges, and our vision for the future of the district. For members of the public, in addition to last night's interviews, and the public interviews last month, several members of the committee, along with Dr. Maestis, toured the candidates around the district, so they visited all six schools. They also met with student groups, the leadership team, central office staff, school staff, and all of whom shared their feedback with the committee. Additionally, the committee conducted extensive reference checks, speaking with people who have worked with the candidates. And we also reached out to people who have worked in their communities, who might have insight and information about them. I want to thank everyone who took the time to meet with the candidates, to watch the interviews, to provide feedback, and also the people who reached out to people they knew in their networks in the Melrose and Montomoy communities, and for sharing their feedback with the committee. It was very helpful. And I just also wanted to specifically thank our student advisory committee and Hingham CPAC for their outreach into those communities to seek perspectives of students and special education families. So our task tonight is, it's a very in-depth process, and I wanted to quickly outline it, to emphasize that while the public interviews, they're an important piece, it's the committee's responsibility to consider that piece along with all of the other pieces to get the clearest possible picture of the candidates and decide who will be the right person for Hingham right now. So our task tonight is to discuss our thoughts on the candidates, share any additional information we might have about them, and decide whether we have consensus to enter into negotiations with one of the candidates. So with that being said, anyone like to kick it off? Their thoughts?
I will.
Thank you.
Actually, I think appropriate too, because after the interviews last night, Tim and I had the pleasure of hosting office hours, so we did get some feedback that we haven't been able to share with everyone from the folks on the call.
Okay.
All right, I'll try to talk a little louder. Can you hear that, Carlos?
Can you hear?
Not too good. It's a little too far.
Should we just pass the control room?
Yeah, we can do that. All right, Carlos.
All right. Can you hear me better, Carlos?
Yes, Michelle. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. So anyway, I was saying that Tim and I had the pleasure of hosting office hours last night after the interviews. And interestingly, it was not all about the candidates. There were some other things that had come up. But I wanted, we wanted to share with you folks the feedback that we've gotten at that office hours, because we haven't been able to give that to you yet. So I think the great news was, I don't think there was anyone who spoke, and probably there were about 25, 28 people on the call, and seven or eight spoke about their thoughts on the candidate interviews. And I think everyone, I think the consensus was, overall, like, there are two good candidates. As a matter of fact, someone very kindly commented that we, that we had picked the best two for the finalists. So that was nice, reassuring to hear. The, I would say, most people were leaning towards Dr. Carpenter because of his experience. They were saying, kind of, all things being equal, there was a feeling that he had the experience with budget and MSBA. Like, he just had that superintendent experience. And that was, you know, if it was a tiebreaker, maybe lean towards the experience. Other folks did indicate, though, that they had thought that Dr. Adams was very eloquent. Her answers were very on point, that she was very student-focused. There were some concerns about her affiliation with the MTA. And did she talk, like, was she too focused on teachers and not parents? But people did think, overall, she was a very strong candidate, as was Dr. Carpenter. So that was pretty much, am I, did I miss anything?
I think so. That's, people were, I mean, yeah, there was also the, some academic discussions about she took, in her interview, whatever answer, she took away the levels from, I think, 7th grade at the middle school where she's at.
Yes.
Maybe 7th and 8th grade, I believe.
Yep, that's right.
So people were concerned that she would come and do that, even though I don't think there was any indication that that was happening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean--
I mean, can I, can I say something about the union stuff?
Oh.
A little bit?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just, uh, because I think this is, I thought that in the discussion, it was very wrapped up with the MTA, the MTA question and the parent focus question, because people felt that she was very focused on teachers during the meeting. But I feel like we asked her several questions that were very targeted toward teachers, and sort of, we set that focus. And the reason we did that with her specifically is we got several letters and talked to people who were, I guess, presented a theory, a statement that, a concern that she had experience in the leadership of the MTA, but left that off of her resume, and people thought that was sketchy. That didn't happen. That was misinformation that somehow was spreading through the community. So I want to make, be very clear about that. All of her MTA, which ended in 2009, all of her MTA work was on her resume. So she was not--
Right.
So I think that was a lot, I think that situation, sort of the 11th hour misinformation that was out there about her application was--
It's unfortunate that that made it into the call. Because it's, it's, she's, you know, she's a strong candidate. And, I mean, the MTA, it's, it's, all teachers are members of the MTA, and most of the people that become superintendents, or the vast majority of them, are teachers. So they all have that background to some degree, you know? And then, you know, the people who become superintendents tend to have leadership positions in other, in their other roles. So that's not, that's not super surprising.
And I actually gave her a lot of credit for having that leadership position so long ago. Right? Maybe it was 2002, right? So it's pretty early in her career that she would have had that.
And by leadership, I think, just to make it clear, we're talking about being on leadership committees. She wasn't like the MTA president or something like--
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I need to clarify that.
So this is, I think it was like their diversity committee.
Yep. Yes, exactly. You're right. So sorry. Yes, to clarify that. So leadership, meaning she, she took an active role on committee, doing committee work--
Right.
For the, for the MTA, which I, which I think is a net positive. I mean, what a unique skill set to have been on both sides of that table, right? So I think that is a net positive. And I definitely understood, I mean, I completely understand the, hey, if it's a tiebreaker, lean towards the experience. I completely see that point of view. I will say that I thought her answer about, you know, you, let's be clear, you don't have the experience. What makes you think you'll be effective at it? I thought her answer was just spot-on, that she was effective when she had not been a teacher before and effective with all the other roles. And I thought that was, that, that, that made me feel very positive. I really respected that answer, and I thought, you know, no one's born a superintendent, right? So at some point, you have the job. And I think, as we had heard from the NESDEC and you folks who were on the screening committee, every candidate who was put forth had the credentials and the capacity to be a superintendent, whether they had sat in that chair or not. They all are, have enough experience under their belt to fill that role 100%. So that made me feel well.
And I would like to add to that topic, that the last time Hingham hired an assistant superintendent to serve as superintendent, she stayed for 18 years and raised the bar of education in this community. So I don't think that we should be afraid of, of that element of it. Her, Margaret's answer, I agree, I was blown away. I was sitting there, I was like, well, good for you. But, and then it did make me reflect on, we have someone in our community that was an assistant superintendent that was named a superintendent. And so I don't think we should forget that.
And I was concerned about that, looking into it. So I know in doing all of the reference checks, it was asked very specifically about, is she ready? Do you think, and people consistently talked about how she hasn't been a superintendent, but she's mentored new superintendents before. She's gone through the year with new superintendents before. She's been a, a source of stability in mentoring in her district. So, which is not the same thing as being a superintendent, but she's not unfamiliar with the role of superintendent, what that entails.
I spoke with her current superintendent, who's new to the district. She's, I think, a year in or two years in. And she talked about how much she learned from Margaret during her time, so. Did you, so did you have something?
I feel like it was three people I spoke with. And all three of them, specifically, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Pass Carlos.
Let's hope I don't forget what I was going to say. Hi, Carlos. So as I was saying, I spoke with three people, and all three of them had the same theme, that, you know, she was an excellent educational mentor and coach, and that she had the excellent skills at motivating people specifically. And that they all said that she was keenly observant in that role, and that helped her make more, some good leadership decisions, and along with her mentoring.
Process-wise, are we talking about Dr. Adams and then talking about Dr. Carpenter? Or, I know it started off as us talking about the office hours. We didn't--
Yeah. How about if we go around and we could each talk about--
Both candidates? Do you want to, do you want to start?
Before we do that, since we're talking about-- That's the only comments that people had on, we didn't talk about what they said about Dr. Carpenter at office hours. Just saying that people were saying that he, they know he, everyone felt incredible sympathy for him because of the Zoom issues. But also, there was a general consensus that even though he's not as good of a communicator or doesn't present as, a lot of people sort of framed their support for Scott Carpenter in terms of, we know he wasn't as, you know, polished or as good of a communicator or something. But, so I think that was, I was interpreting that as people's major concern with him.
Yeah, I would agree. I think people were--
It was the experience that was tipping the scale, I think. And just, and again, just, that was just the office hours. Like, I think, in my experience, we've, we've gotten-- And some of the emails, sorry, some of the emails and phone calls, like, some of them are, I think, we hear from multiple people, they copy all of us, some of us get reached out individually. I mean, I would say it's probably a 50-50 split, right? So it's 50% of the people, say, supporting Dr. Carpenter, 50% of the people, Dr. Adams. So I think it's, you know, it's, it's 50-50 out there. I will say that one of the, I'm going to, I'm going to share this, because it absolutely brightened mine and Tim's day, and I think it will brighten yours as well. One of the committee, one of the community members had said, "I just want to let you know," and I want to say this in front of everyone on the call, "that I have total faith in this school committee to make the right decision. That's what we elected you for, and I'm not going to give you my opinion one way or the other, the person said, because I have faith that you folks will make the right decision." So that was, yes, that was, it's very nice to hear after all. Talked to a couple here, so. But yeah, people were definitely pleased with the two candidates. And again, I mean, really, there wasn't anything bad about, said about either one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good problem to have. Do you want to start, Michelle? We can pass Carlos.
Yes. So sorry, we are doing--
Just your question on both--
On both. Okay. So I will start with Dr. Carpenter, then. I think Dr. Carpenter is an excellent written communicator. Loved the email that he sent today. Very detailed. I like his science background. I like his, I cannot overlook the, you know, he sort of saw the COVID thing coming and his proactiveness on that. I think that was very impressive. I think his experience is very impressive as well. And Dr. Adams, I, the thing that keeps striking me about Dr. Adams in every interaction, the interviews in the public that we had, last night's interview, her focus on students. She just used the word "student" so frequently. And that really struck me, because I know that not only that was the number-one thing on our checklist of the ideal candidate, was to be student-focused, but also, like, that's the underlying mission of this committee, right? Student achievement, right, for all students. And just the way, just the passion and the energy and the engagement she had with students, just, something about it just really clicked with me. And, I mean, I get that she hasn't been a superintendent, and, you know, we've got budget concerns, we've got MSBA working. But I do also think that those two things are, like, there are lots of people supporting that work, right? We've got a standout building committee. I'm a member of it, so I'm not including myself in that standout part of it. But there are people on there who have done this before. You know, the budget, we have new budget, you know, sustainability task force. We have, everybody's eyes are focused on the budget. So I'm not super concerned about those two things when it comes to Dr. Adams. I just feel like she is like the whole package, right? She's a good oral communicator, she's a good written communicator. I've gone and watched a lot of school committee meetings from both the Montomoy School Committee and the Melrose School Committee, where Dr. Adams, when she was doing presentations. And just the way she engages and the excitement she has for education is just, I don't know, it's just palpable to me. So I feel like she just hits all the buttons for me.
I'll try not to be repetitive. I feel similarly. Just looking at the school districts, I think Montomoy School District is very different than Hingham. And I think Melrose is, in important ways, very similar to Hingham. So I think, in comparing their experience, it seems, it's, to me, it's more important to have a town that's more similar in demographics, more similar in, I mean, even the ways that they're different are, Melrose is probably a little bit more high-needs, has more high-needs kids. And what Melrose has done with their numbers is amazing. Looking at the directions of their test scores, as students became more high-risk, their scores also went up, like, so I think there's been a lot of, you know, where the rubber hits the road, you know, effects of the leadership in Melrose that you can see. And I think, I mean, I know I spoke the last time just about the communication ability, and I believe that we need somebody who's really going to bring the community back together. It's been a really divisive couple of years. I think we need a unifying figure. And I think you need to be able to communicate in order to unify people. And primarily, how we communicate is, you know, out loud and through emails. And I think, I think she's just, I connected with her more. I felt inspired by her in the similar ways that Michelle did. I think he, I think both people could walk into this job tomorrow and do great. I don't think there's a wrong choice. If, if Dr. Adams hadn't, didn't apply, I would be very comfortable going forward with Dr. Carpenter. But I'm, my, my preference would be Dr. Adams at this point.
All right, so we were going to let it end.
Do you want to maybe have Carlos go?
Sure.
Carlos, do you want to go?
Put them near our microphones.
Actually, everyone can go ahead, and I'll be one of the last.
Okay.
I'm moving the, the Zoom, Carlos. So Michelle and Tim hit on a lot of my feelings as well. I think there are great things about both candidates. Dr. Carpenter has the one advantage where he has the experience. He's, his great written skills, we got to see some of that today. I just wouldn't want us to make the decision to hire the next superintendent based on experience alone. I think we need to think about who's right for our district and who's right for advancing us to where we want to go. And I feel like that person is Dr. Adams. She, she did say it's student-focused all the time. She was constantly talking about the students. And what really resonated with me last night was a question that I had asked about what was a fully-charged situation, and how did you resolve it? And their answers differed. They both talked about what they thought was right for the student, but because things were fully-charged, Dr. Carpenter didn't end up going with what he thought was the best decision for the kids, whereas Dr. Adams did. She said, "This is what's right for the kids." And she brought people along and communicated with them frequently about why they needed to keep going back to what was the best thing for the students, even if people didn't necessarily agree with her. So she was the reason why I wanted to go with her.
I'm going to go last.
Typical demeanor.
Yeah. So I went over the candidate profile today and thought about, on each item, you know, who was, who was better. And so, student-focused leader was our first category. And, and Margaret was the winner on that. And then, effective and experienced school district operations. That was almost, that was kind of a tie. And then inspirational and accessible leader, Margaret was stronger. And then, effective and dynamic community leader, it was a tie for me. So I agree, we can only pick one, and that's the hardest part of this. As far as communications, I felt that last night, I agree with the community that, you know, with Scott Carpenter's technology problems, I felt really bad for him. I did give him points, because he solved the problem very quickly by using his phone. And he thought, like, within 10 minutes, he was like, "I got another solution." So I was impressed with, with that. But the one that stood out to me from Margaret was my question at the beginning about how they dealt with the last two days. And she made the answer personable and relatable by saying, "We feel like we're all on the Survivor show and we're facing the next challenge." And I, I was like, "God, you hit the nail on the head." But it was the way of, everyone could understand that and could picture it and image it. And I felt that that's the type of communication we need with all of the challenges we face. Then I, you know, I reflected on, picked up on her student feedback and how much she engaged students in thinking about the future. And, you know, right now, we've just begun teaching civics again in the classroom. And, you know, with the 8th grade, and those kids are going to come up. And our high school students are very active already, our student advisory committee. And they told us that they really connected with Margaret. And so that came into my mind, too, of, you know, if we're thinking to the future, because we asked about that question last night. I did look back at the district data, like Tim did. I agree with him. And then, we got some emails from parents about teachers and seemed to be, people seemed to be concerned about union issues. And of having served on salary negotiations for all of my nine years on this committee and going through three collect bargaining negotiations, the, I felt both candidates have a lot of experience with negotiations. When we had some successes in our negotiations with the teachers, it was by using interest-based bargaining-type discussions and, you know, this restorative justice that Margaret talked about, which struck me. But I want to be honest and humble with the community that teacher morale is a real dilemma now, because of COVID, going in the future, because of just the situation with teaching is a very challenging profession, and in the past in Hingham. And our teachers have some, have real concerns about their workplace environment. And honestly, some of those issues were caused by miscommunications, rash decisions, lack of planning by the town, by administration, by the school committee. And it's, it's something that I worry about, and I'm really trying to work on this year. And we need a leader who's going to be strong to build those positive relationships and establish structures. And Margaret talked about that in the interview, this last, last night's interviews, about establishing protocols, and we're going to follow those protocols so that everyone's clear on how we're operating and how we're communicating. And she has an expectation for operational success and that we collaborate to achieve and improve, and we're going to bring everyone to the next level. And when I was checking references with the Melrose teachers, I asked them about morale, and they were happy. They actually said they were happy. And I checked references, Montomoy too, and the other two candidates. And, you know, the Montomoy people, they, they would be sorry to see Scott go. They, they felt good about how the COVID was handled, but they weren't happy. And the Melrose people were happy, and they were really disappointed if Margaret left, but they were happy for her to have opportunity. So, you know, I hear happy, and I think about life, I hear, you know, happy wife, happy life, kind of. But, you know, if our teachers are happy, our students are going to be happy, and they're going to be learning, and the parents then are going to be happy. And then the town will be happy and support our schools. And so for me, this is a really important part, and how she talked about how collaborative she is with unions and that it's, it's how you work together to make a good workplace environment and do what's best for the students. It's not the approach of us versus them. And for me personally, that's really important of where we are today with Hingham. And if we can change, one of the things we need to change and work on to make us better and to make us excellent is to address the teacher morale. So I'm going out on a limb saying all of this tonight, but I really feel it's important for the community to understand that we own this and we own making our teachers feel good and provide a positive workplace environment for them. So that's, that's important for me. So, you know, she is a nationally-recognized educator. And I think to bring Hingham to the next level, too, and to achieve a vision, we need an excellent educator. And so that came out. Scott is a fantastic administrator. He was a great teacher. He has a lot of experience. I just feel that there's some nuances and some specifics that Margaret is better for what we need today and for bringing everyone along to move us to the next.
Yep, we're just going with a, I'm so, hi, Carlos. So I, I, you know, it's been wonderful, what everybody else, everyone has been saying, and I am on the same wavelength as you all. You know, Dr. Carpenter, there's no doubt that he has exceptional experience as superintendent and that that experience would be beneficial, having him come in here. That said, I think I said the last time I spoke publicly that somebody has to give her a chance. And she has demonstrated, I think, through all of her, Dr. Adams, through all of her interviews, through all of, at least through my research, that she is, is ready, is ready for this, for this position. She's, I think she's been ready for a while, quite frankly, from listening to a lot of her colleagues that I've spoken to. She's a very strong candidate, and she's presented herself with a very high level of professionalism. And she speaks very eloquently when she's speaking. And I think that is something that is very important for our community, especially in the direction that we're heading, communication. It's key, getting, you know, the message out there, out there. And not to say that that's the only reason, but, and because Dr. Carpenter does have excellent written communication, I've gone through their website, and I've looked at a lot of notices that he has sent out, and I've been very impressed with those. So not to downplay that at all. But I, you know, and everyone I spoke to regarding Dr. Carpenter, you know, they, they speak very highly of him. So this is, it's a tough decision. They're two great candidates, and we can't go wrong. Just to, something I wanted to bring up is that it's just been apparent, I think, in our interview-- in our interviews and the, also more research that I've done, other people I've talked into that, Dr. Adams, he does have a good understanding of special education and the current, and then also the current educational practices and initiatives for inclusive programming, which I believe is on our successful candidate profile. And I think that's something just to point out. You know, and then back to with her excellent listening skills that I've also heard and I believe, I think that with her excellent listening skills and her collaborative style, I think that will play out very well with, you know, working with the union, her staff and her, and the students in our community, you know, in our schools. She has great problem solving skills and she listens to all sides. So, you know, I think all these qualities and her expertise in all of the roles that she has been as educator would be a great fit for our district.
It's Liza, I really appreciate what you were saying because that was one of the other things that I'd had in my notes, like I, and, and I think some, some folks in the community, not many, but a couple, I think, didn't like the answer about what's the biggest challenge that you see.
Sorry.
But, but I. Sorry. I was saying that, I think some of the, one of the points I was going to bring up about Dr. Adams as well is when asked about what the biggest challenge was, she had said teacher retention. And I think for some parents, that sort of struck them as not the best thing to say, right? It's really the students that are at the center of it. But I, but what she was saying was absolutely right. The way we've got to unify this district is to bring the teachers along, who will bring the students along, who will bring the parents along. And I think just that she, like saying boldly, there was no, there's no beating around the bush on that answer. She went right to the biggest challenge is going to be teacher retention, right? Like she was like, we're already addressing that in Melrose, we're doing all these things. So I'm totally with you. I thought that was really telling to me and I thought that's, that's where it begins. And it's a school district, right? It begins with the staff. And so I thought also a good point, so.
And just to clarify, because I know this is some parents concerned, there's, Liza talked about a collaborative relationship with the union versus an us versus them relationship. That does not mean giving into the union. That's not a position of weakness coming into the union. That's a position of strength coming in to work to make sure everyone's needs are met. But that's not, I don't think anybody on, is saying that, you know, we're, we want someone who will come in and just give into everything the union wants and that's not. I know no one's saying that. I just want to be very clear because I know that's the concern of some people.
All right, sorry, we're going to bring you back over, Carlos, hold on, sorry.
Okay, Carlos, I'm putting you next to the microphone if you want to share your thoughts.
Can you all hear me well?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize to my colleagues and to the constituents. I'm in Brazil visiting my mother for the first time in 10 years. We were able to get together with my siblings to celebrate my mother's 80th birthday. So I apologize for not being there in person during this important moment. I already, you know, my colleagues did a pretty good job in highlighting the strengths of both candidates. I believe there is no weakness there in terms of, you know, overall experience and being ready to do the job. I believe both are well qualified and couldn't definitely get the job done. Just wanted to make sure that people also understand at times, you know, not everyone communicate in a similar manner. I'm one of them. And if you all remember, Mayor Menino in Boston motto was, I'm not, not a great speaker, but I get the job done. And just wanted to say that because I found, you know, both candidates very personable, great, you know, Dr. Adams, great speaker. Dr. Carpenter, I found him to be a great speaker at times and then other times obviously he would, you know, drop a little bit. I believe and I have stated that, that part of that too is because he's a very humble person and a person that actually likes to include all his staff. I cited during debriefing when we decided to go on with the two candidates, that when I did the reference checks, that staff spoke so highly of Dr. Carpenter, specifically saying that they came to the district because of him and they are sad to see him leaving and that perhaps that individual may retire as a result of it. So it's a tough decision that we had before us tonight. I feel again that we have, you know, two strong, well-qualified candidates. Dr. Adams did do very well during her interview. Her references were all positive and they all spoke very highly of her. Her strong attention to details when addressing curriculum, being student focused and teachers' professional development were very impressive. Her ability to include and ensure that our students are receiving a quality education is a huge strength and a plus. I like the fact that she has classroom experience as a teacher and as an assistant principal and also as an assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, and learning. Dr. Carpenter as well, you know, as we all know, he is a current superintendent. He's a former teacher, he's a former principal and also coached sports, you know, on his earliest day. On his current role, he was hired in 2013 to lead the state, the state newest regional school district. He finalized the merger of two schools district in tier one, dealing with politicians in two different towns, not only on the school committee, but also at the town level. He added a district-wide equity task force and ensured that our students were, you know, receiving a quality education as well. His involvement constructing not only a regional high school, but also a regional middle school from the ground up is quite an accomplishment. He improved curriculum and enhanced education experience for our students. As I said, he is very humble, very knowledgeable, very personable and a great leader. You know, he has been involved with contract negotiations for the last 20 years and delivered over 20 budgets, which is a plus. So I agree with the community that, you know, he, he has tons of experience. I also agree with my colleagues that experience is great, it's awesome, but it's not everything that we are looking on a person. Obviously, we value our teachers, we value our overall staff. And everything that they do reflect in how our students learn and are successful. And I found that both of them are both student and staff focused, which I appreciated. But I really liked the fact that Dr. Carpenter brought stability to the district where he's leading now. And he was proactive, as Michelle stated, dealing with COVID. You know, many of us were not. And he was pretty quick in getting them back to in-person learning and set ground rules with the union that certain things were, were not negotiable. I don't have anything, you know, against what, you know, the fact that actually Dr. Adams was involved with the MTA. I think like someone, someone else said, is a class. I myself, I'm a former business agent with the union and very pro labor, but I don't, you know, I'm not there, very biased, we have to be fair. So I wanted to highlight that as well. And one thing that really struck me was the fact that Dr. Carpenter worked with assistant principals to make them, to promote them to principals and that was a plus. Given the fact that we have right now in our, you know, shoulders, we have to replace, you know, the, our business director, business and support service director, we have to perhaps replace three principals at East, Foster and PIS. And, you know, we are still dealing with COVID. I find that Dr. Carpenter is the best qualified candidate to lead us during this time. And, you know, essentially I am leaning toward supporting Dr. Carpenter.
All right. Thank you, Carlos. Most of my comments are about the interview last night because we've discussed a lot of other things about the candidates, but I just want to say for Dr. Carpenter, I, I agree with Carlos as far as the stability. That's a real strength of his, he, he mentioned his homegrown principals and other people who have gone, been principals and then gone on to be superintendents in other towns. And I think that's, that's impressive and that's, it's a good thing. And yeah, I think he was student focused as well. He mentioned that it's the responsibility of the superintendent to, they're responsible for all students, not just certain ones or most of them. I thought that was, that was good. I was impressed with the science background in his COVID response as well. I thought that was very proactive to be watching that January of 2020 and, and plan for it. I did have pause, he, he had mentioned last night that one of his goals was to show one year's progress in one year for students. And that sort of gave me pause because I think in Hingham, that's the expectation. It's not a goal. The goal is for, we're trying to close the achievement gap. And I was sort of looking for some more specific answers around that. But I think he's great and just from my reference checks too, like people love him. And, and I think that's, that's true for both candidates. For Dr. Adams, she, I think her, her answers last night in both interviews really were, they were specific, they were thoughtful and they were thorough. And her reference checks back that up too. Everyone mentioned those things. She was described as data-driven, detail-oriented and an excellent mentor too, just similarly to Dr. Carpenter. Last night I heard, the two main themes I heard from her were student, students and systems and processes. So the student focus, she talked about promoting student agency. She mentioned it with the COVID protocols and having them take ownership of that, which is, I think that's important, you know, that it's, it's going to be more successful. I really liked that she talked about teaching underlying skills for student agency because we often hear students should advocate for themselves, especially at the secondary level. But many students need to be taught those skills, how to do it effectively. So I liked that she had mentioned that. She mentioned teachers as a facilitator instead of as a director. And my understanding with that, because we did get an email today about that specific statement, and that doesn't mean that students run the show. It means that they, it's, it's recognizing that it's their education and they, and encouraging them to take some ownership of it. And I liked her response to the student advisory committee's question last night about her responsibilities to increase opportunities for all students. And that included students who are excelling as well as those that are maybe struggling or feel like they don't belong. Because they're, they're all our students and they all deserve an excellent education. So I appreciate, I really appreciated that philosophy. I also thought her response was quite forward-thinking, recognizing that in order for our students to be successful on the global stage, they need to understand different backgrounds, like looking at it from that perspective as well. For the systems and processes, she had very specific response to, responses to literacy question and describing the importance of a strong tier one supports and practices, strong assessment measures, methods and using research-based curriculum resources and assessments. And I think that was important. She described systems to support teachers and school leaders to focus on hiring excellent people and retaining them. She mentioned her labor management group and the other structures that they have in place to work with the staff between negotiations, so you're not just sitting down at the table periodically. And the practice of having other people from other districts come in to observe and critique. I think that was, shows kind of a learning mindset, which I appreciated. She talked about the clear chain of communications and just some systems. And I, and I also liked, she talked about a rolling agenda for the school committee and her systems, what she would do, the system she would put, put in place to communicate with us, which I appreciate from this perspective.
Well, and just to add to that, Carrie, I was thinking of that too. We did, we made our list of the reports. And so I was like, oh, she's on the same wavelength that we are of how we want to operate. So I, I, I remember that too. I was like, oh, good.
Yeah, and just with the MTA, I think we covered most of it, but I did want to mention that she did negotiate with the principals and directors in Melrose. She ran that, ran point on that and they're, they're members of the Teamsters. So she has some experience negotiating on both sides of the table, which I think is the, and, and I'm new, I don't have Liza's experience on salary negotiations, but from my short time there, I see what a huge benefit it would be to have somebody who understands both perspectives in the, at the table. So, so I was, I was very impressed with her, with both of them. And again, this is not an easy choice and again, we can only pick one, unfortunately. But, but yeah, I don't know. So, does anyone do, are we here? It seems like we're hearing a little bit of consensus here.
Happy to make a motion if folks are ready. So I would make a motion to enter into contract negotiations with Dr. Margaret Adams.
All right. Carlos, we're, I don't know if you heard that, Michelle just made a motion to enter into contract negotiations with Dr. Adams. And we have a second. So if you want to unmute yourself. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Sorry, Carlos, we didn't catch your vote?
I said aye.
Oh, you said aye too? Okay. All right, great. So unanimously, that's exciting. So thank you, thank you everyone for your hard work and for everyone out there who helped in the process too. It was good. So, okay, so we have a vote. We're going to recess for about 15 minutes so we can call the candidates. And then when we come back, we'll return to open session. So we'll take a break. So we're returning to open session at six, 55. So, all right, so the next thing we have is to discuss the next steps in the superintendent search process. So I just spoke with Dr. Adams, she was excited. She wanted to jump off and let her staff know. So we will, so we'll circle back with her and begin negotiations. And that, did that run, that ran through salary negotiations through the full? Okay. So, so we.
And Dr. Carpenter was very gracious and he said, thank you so much for the opportunity. He appreciated meeting everyone and he enjoyed his time here in the district. So, and he said the best of luck to all of us.
So the next thing is to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session.
Sure. I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purposes of reviewing non-union individual and administrator, and administrator contracts, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
All in favor? It's upstairs, your will call.
Aye.
All right, okay.